Moved that the members of the school board go into a closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of section 2.2-3711 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended for discussion or consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of the Norfolk Public Schools pursuant to subsection one of the above cited code section. The subject of this portion of the session concerns the personnel agenda of this date. B, discussion or consideration of disciplinary and other matters concerning students in Norfolk Public Schools that would involve the disclosure of information contained in the scholastic record pursuant to subsection two of the above cited code section. The subjects of this portion of the session is the student support services agenda of this date and the consideration of the funding and awarding of scholarship to specific students. Consultation with legal counsel pertaining to specific legal matters requiring provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsection eight of the above cited section. The subjects of this section of the motion are consultation with legal counsel concerning legal matters related to the personnel and student support matters identified above and advice from legal counsel regarding specific legal matters related to recent and ongoing cases concerning students' rights under titles nine and ten, I mean nine eleven.
Title seven and nine.
Seven eleven, excuse me, seven eleven.
Title seven and title nine.
Title seven.
The civil rights statutes.
Is that it?
Yes.
Title seven and nine, and that's it.
So in on the on board docs there was we added an agenda item to the public docket dealing with some scholarships and then we added documents associated with it to the closed session agenda, but I didn't hear that mentioned. So are we talking about that in closed session or?
Yeah, that's the reference that was made to the consideration of the funding and awarding of scholarships to specific students.
Okay.
Any legal issues related there too.
So the the documents that we have there, are those considered, are those really?
Therefore discussion in the executive session and then released to the public in general.
In terms of the legal appropriateness of the documents?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I apologize, Ms. Tanner, I, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Bassin, go ahead.
So I don't I don't see any documents related to that on board docs.
On executive content.
What?
It's under executive content, under the student matters.
Under stu-, oh.
It just got it got added.
Okay, I thought it was a separate, oh.
I think they're paper copies to hand out once we get into executive session.
I see it here, it just wasn't it wasn't there earlier.
Ms. Tanner, I did skip over the official roll call, if you want to go ahead and do that, I know that they're.
Ms. Bassin?
Here.
Hampson?
Here.
Clanton is absent, Smith, Martin, Jordan?
Here.
Gabriel?
Here. So it's been moved, it's been seconded, we've had discussion, Ms. Tanner, if you could please call.
Okay. Bassin?
Aye.
Hampson?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye, thank you. Okay, go into closed session. Good evening. The school board would like to welcome all who are present tonight, students, parents, principals, administrators, and our stakeholders. Thank you for coming and joining us tonight. Ms. Tanner, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Hampson?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Here.
Gabriel?
Aye, thank you. We will now have the presentation of colors and the pledge of allegiance by Lake Taylor High School. Is faith?
Caligars, left, head, hoot! Forward, hut! Colors, hoot! Left, face! Free set! Coats! Ready, hut!
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order! Ready, hut! Height, face! Forward, hut!
Thank you very much, you may be seated. And again, we sincerely appreciate the ROTC with Lake Taylor High School. The next item that we have on our agenda is a special treat that we are returning to. We took a break over the summer, but during the school year, we typically have a musical performance to showcase our students, the musical talents that we have within our division. And so right now, I'm going to turn it over to Laramore Elementary School.
Hi, I'm Jessica Jones, I'm Laramore's music teacher, so first of all, thank you so much for having us. We're gonna do something a little bit different, we're gonna perform a book, but in a musical style, so at Laramore, our focus is?
Read often and rise!
Good, so roar, read often and rise. So literacy is a really important part of everything we do, so I try to include literacy activities in music class as much as possible, so we hope you enjoy the book. The book is about a little boy Mortimer who's supposed to be going to sleep, so that's why we're wearing our pajamas, because he's. Okay, so we hope you enjoy Mortimer. Oh, and you all have little mini versions, you can get out your binoculars and follow along. One night, Mortimer's mother took him up the stairs to go to bed.
Ready and.
When they got upstairs, Mortimer's mother opened the door to his room, she threw him into bed and said, "Mortimer, be quiet." Mortimer shook his head, yes, yes, yes. The mother shut the door and then she went back down the stairs. Ready and. Soon as they got back downstairs, Mortimer sang. One, two, here we go. Well, Mortimer's father heard all that noise and he came up the stairs. Ready and. He opened the door and yelled, "Mortimer, be quiet." Mortimer shook his head, yes, yes. The father went back down the stairs. Ready and. Soon as he got back to the stairs, Mortimer sang. One, two, here we go. Well, all of Mortimer's seventeen brothers and sisters heard that noise and they all came up the stairs. Ready and. They opened the door and yelled in a tremendous loud voice.
Mortimer, be quiet!
Mortimer shook his head, yes, yes. The brothers and sisters shut the door and went back down the stairs. Ready and. Soon as they got to the bottom of the stairs, Mortimer sang. One, two, here we go. Well, they got so upset that they called the police. Two policemen came and they walked very slowly up the stairs. Ready and. They opened the door and said in very deep policeman-type voices.
Mortimer, be quiet!
The policemen shut the door and went back down the stairs. Ready and. Soon as they got to the bottom of the stairs, Mortimer sang. One, two, here we go. Well, downstairs, no one knew what to do. The mother got into a big fight with the policeman and the father got into a big fight with the brothers and sisters. Upstairs, Mortimer got so tired waiting for someone to come up that he fell asleep.
The end!
Oh, hold on a second, boys and girls, don't go away just yet. Oh, can we bring them back for just a second?
Camilla, stop. You're so officious.
They are, they're like. Well, you guys did a fantastic job, we are very proud of you. Would you tell everyone here what is a favorite thing that you like in your music class? And we can start with this young man right here. Playing music? Playing instruments?
Singing songs.
Singing songs?
Playing drums.
Playing the drums?
Using the mallets.
Using the mallets, oh, and he knows the drum.
Playing bells.
Playing the bells?
Doing activities that include music.
Doing parades?
I let her, after class, we'll have a parade back to the classroom and she gets to play the drum, so she gets to lead us down the hallway, that's what she's talking about.
Oh, she likes the music teacher. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. That is certainly one of our most favorite parts of our school board meetings. And now on to the superintendent's report, item 3.05.
Good evening, Dr. Gabriel, members of the board and members of our community. Before sharing the video version of the superintendent's report with you, I would like to provide the board and our community an update of the conditions of Sherwood Forest Elementary School. First of all, as the acting superintendent of schools and as a mother of two school-aged children myself, I would not have any child under my supervision and care to report to any school that I had knowledge of being unsafe to occupy, nor would I willingly subject any staff member to unsafe working conditions.
Thank you.
When I was made aware of the concern on September the 27th that there were rodents and the possibility of mold at Sherwood Forest Elementary School, I immediately followed up with central office staff members to determine the status of the work that had been completed or scheduled to be completed to address and resolve the issues. That very same evening, I learned that our facilities management team had already begun working with building and central level staff as well as local contractors to assess these reports and resolve concerns. Due to the level of concern expressed by school staff to the facilities management team, supervisors of this team contracted outside businesses to provide additional expertise with addressing and resolving concerns. Applied Laboratory Services was contracted to evaluate mold contamination in identified areas of the school. The results of this indoor environmental quality assessment indicated that the identified areas of concern had no presence of active mold, nor were conditions conducive to mold growth. What was previously described as white mold in the school was found to be white ceiling plaster. Other areas thought to contain mold did not, such as a ventilator unit that needed to be thoroughly cleaned and a stained ceiling tiles that should be replaced. The air quality of tested areas have been reported within normal environmental ranges. In terms of rodents, initial inspections conducted by A1 Incorporated Exterminators indicated a low to medium presence of rodents. This contractor has reported no rodent activity on the exterior of the building for the past 10 days. An area supervisor at the school reported that a total of six rodents were trapped inside of the building last week. This week, he has reported one trapping. A preliminary report provided by Acme Animal Control, the contractor who was conducted or conducted the remediation of contaminated insulation above the ceiling level, indicated a low to moderate presence of rodents. Based upon the assessments conducted by external contractors and their collaboration with our district-level experts, there is no indication at this time that Sherwood Forest Elementary School is not safe for students and staff to occupy. We acknowledge the concerns of parents, let me repeat that, we acknowledge the concerns of parents, and parents, we hear you, we hear you. I would like to share the administration's plan to address these concerns. We want our parents and community to have every confidence that Sherwood Forest Elementary School has an environment that is conducive to high levels of teaching and learning. We have moved forward with expediting a process to evaluate every classroom and every common area of the school for airborne contaminants such as mold, mildew, and asbestos. We will continue to work with certified with a certified environmental testing firm with whom the school division currently has a contract so that we can so that the work can be done in an expedited manner. Again, the safety and security of students and staff is my number one priority. Please know that it's the administration's intention to be fully transparent with our parents, guardians, and community members regarding the conditions of Sherwood Forest. At any point, if I or the administration believes that the school or any other school within the district is not safe for students and staff, then I will assure you that I will work with the school board to do whatever is needed to ensure everyone's safety. At this time, I will ask John Hazewett, who serves as our acting deputy superintendent of operations, to please come to the podium to provide a more detailed report of the assessments conducted at the school and our plan to expedite all of the things that we need to have done to address any concerns with safety and security. Mr. Hazewett?
Thank Dr. Birdsong, Dr. Gabriel, members of the board and citizens that are here. I would like to to provide you with with some additional details on what the administration has done, our findings, which Dr. Birdsong has has pretty much elaborated already, and most importantly, what our next steps are. But before I begin, I would like to repeat what was stated last night at the at the parent meeting and that we are committed to addressing the concerns of the parents and the staff at Sherwood Forest. This this matter initially began as a concern about rodents within the building and in the overhead above the drop ceiling. The latter part dealt with rodent feces and urine that had impacted or what we thought had impacted air quality. Sherwood Forest staff, custodial staff supported by facilities management, personnel, and two private contractors aggressively addressed the problem. On September the 27th, our pest management contractor inspected Sherwood and found that the term, as Dr. Birdsong has said, that their terminology that was used was low to moderate presence of rodents. As part of that work, they identified and sealed exterior identified exterior roof entry points. They then cleaned, removed, and/or sanitized the identified areas of concern in the drop ceiling plus four classrooms and in the office area. They were, I'm sorry, four classrooms and the office and the office area were identified as areas where evidence of rodent activity was present. As of yesterday, all of those areas have been have been inspected and remediated. The second contractor worked with Norfolk Public School staff to place glue traps for use in the building and baited traps around the exterior of the building. And Dr. Birdsong has already shared the results of those of those findings. Lastly, I would I would report that an inspection of the facility was conducted by the Virginia Department of Agriculture and Consumer and Consumer Services yesterday, and we are awaiting the final report. We hope to get that within the next few days. Our next steps, we are directing our, as was mentioned, there are two different pest management firms, the one that deals with above the ceiling, that firm is will be has been directed to conduct a full interior inspection on the remaining areas for additional cleanup beyond the four classrooms and the office that I previously mentioned. We're also directing our second pest management contractor, who does below-the-ceiling work, to continue their monitoring, to monitor the bait boxes and any potential entry points in conjunction with, that'll be done on a daily basis by NPS staff at the school itself. And it's 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 also, you know, as a result of as a result of this entire work, there were comments have come up about just overall general cleanliness of the building. And it's I wanted to point out that as a standard practice, custodial services each summer, they do a thorough, deep cleaning of every school prior to the start of the school year. That was done at Sherwood this year. Since then, there have been two weekends, the last two weekends, that the building has had additional cleanings done. The second area of concern has to do with air quality. Following up on staff concerns about potential mold in the overhead, Risk Management and Safety contacted our lab, our environmental lab, and scheduled them to come to Sherwood to conduct air quality testing. That was done on October the 10th, and we received the results the next day. It was reported, as Dr. Birdsong said, it was initially reported to us that there was white mold, and we found that that was not the case, that was it was plaster debris, not not mold. Additionally, ambient air samples were taken from room number 19 and the principal's office as well as outside of the building. Those locations were selected based on specific statements from the school concerning the health of staff in those spaces. Comparisons were made, at that point in time, there were additional, I think there were four additional rooms that were identified, and and those were inspected as well. Comparisons were made to air samples that were done in 2016, and they were found to be found to be consistent with that during that during that time. As the as was shared in the report and reading from the report, just drawing a statement from the lab said, "Based on our experience, an individual would be exposed to much greater concentrations of mold when outdoors than from indoors, from from the inside." So our next steps as it relates to that, we're directing our our lab to conduct a more thorough sampling to include, as Dr. Birdsong said, all classrooms and common spaces within the building. This work is is currently being programmed by our vendor. This is a weather-sensitive process, and so we're we're coordinating that, but it is our hope to have that to have that all those air quality samples done this week. And we're told that we'll get the results within 24 to 36 hours, so depending on the day, it could be Monday before we get the final results. Mr. Danny Johnson is here, who is our senior coordinator for facilities management, as well as Mr. Bill Bankhart, who is a health our health and safety specialist with Risk Management and Safety. If there are any particular questions that the board have, I will call on our our resident experts to help field those questions, should there be any.
Thank you, Mr. Hazewett, and thank you very much, Dr. Birdsong. For our board members, are there specific questions that you have?
I have a question. Correct me if I'm wrong, you did mention that there'll be traps on the outside of the building, correct?
Correct.
Will those be within the reach of the children if they so happen to stumble across them?
They are they are locked traps.
Okay.
That you you have to, you have to.
There's a key.
Yeah, there's a there's a key, they're key locked.
So they can't reach them?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, thank you.
It's a short answer, thank you.
All right, any other board questions? Ms. Bassin?
So I have some questions regarding, you know, what the written protocols are for situations like this, and do you feel that they are sufficient? Do we need to reexamine them to so that not only do we as a board and administration know what they are, but that the community also knows what they are and knows what to expect of us, so that we have a reporting process that we can rely on?
Are you speaking to the pest issue or is any or anything that we're talking about, health and safety?
Anything related to health and safety.
Okay. I would ask Mr. Bankhart, that risk management has protocols, Mr. Bankhart, if you would join me?
The protocols that we have, we try to be proactive in the schools. Risk management does inspections of all the schools twice a year. I go through, I personally go through each of the schools, all the closets, all the classrooms, all the everywhere in the school, looking for issues of health and safety. Beyond that, we also have our custodial staff, my right-hand men and women who report to me or contact me when they have issues come up. And if that's when that happens, because I can't be every place all the time, but they're in the schools every day, and they will report through their supervisor to me if an issue is aroused has arisen. And at that point, we react to that and and provide testing and/or evaluation of the issues that are of concern. In this particular case, it was once it was made aware to us, in my office, that we had a problem, we immediately took action to to evaluate what was reported to be present in the school. And so that's how we get things going, does that help?
Yeah, well, I'm actually asking about a written protocol that is standard that would describe to everyone, even at the beginning of the year, I think some divisions do, you know, a health and safety audit every year, they inspect the school to make sure certain things are in place. And then when we when an incident or a situation arises, you know, we all are on the same page about what to expect in terms of evaluating the situation, like, you know, was the health department involved? Was, you know, who's involved, are they, you know, qualified individuals that are involved? And what were the outcomes? So that's what I mean, like, where is the written protocol? And I asked that because, you know, I looked, you know, through our policies in the policy manual, and we talk a lot about, you know, viral infections, you know, what to do with certain types of exposures, but we don't have specific policies around what we're experiencing right now. And so, it's just something to consider, because I think from what I've seen and heard in the last couple of days, that perhaps the division should consider having a very clear protocol that is written, or looking at our policies that clearly indicate what to expect of the administration and the school board, so, so that we have a clear, clear plan in place.
It's some SOPs to, to be established.
Yeah.
Mr. Johnson, I think Mr. Johnson wanted to add.
I have a question for Mr. Bankhart. There is a protocol for asbestos, apothecary, and air quality checks and clearance checks for that. I don't know if it would be the same process.
We have, thank you for reminding me of that. Yes, for asbestos issues, we follow the EPA, and we follow EPA guidelines for the, what they call, AHRAS, Asbestos Hazard Emergency Response Act. We fully comply with those issues. With regard to your concern about written protocols when issues such as the mold and mildew, we don't, I don't, I'm not sure, I don't have a written protocol for that, but I certainly will take that in consideration and take that up.
Yeah, and can I add one follow-up question to that? So, and as, as a board, you know, I'd like us to think about too, I know over the years we've had lots of questions about air quality assessments of our schools, especially in our aging schools, and at times, it's been difficult, and I recall this from, you know, years ago, before the five schools were built, there were lots of concerns about certain schools and the air quality, and then, and it was very difficult to get the reports back to the public, you know? I know I was one that had requested that at that time, and, you know, can we think about even a process of where it's online, where people, citizens, parents, you know, can go look and say, you know, what is the status of my school?
As a matter of fact, we had that discussion last night.
Okay.
We did, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, great.
Mr. Jordan?
So, I guess, questions and discussions. So, first, I would just ask, do you have any reports on student and staff welfare? Just any who are reporting absences, or whether it's absences where parents are choosing not to send their children, or absences that are being aligned with ailments that students or staff may feel that they are experiencing? Do we have any, any data on that?
Only anecdotal information that's been shared, but as far as any quantifiable data, we don't have that.
Well, one of the things I would think is important for us to look at is absences, both for students and staff, and to try to make sure that if there are communication challenges that we still need to fill, to make sure that we don't have students who are taking unexcused absences. I mean, bottom line is, if the, if we are stating that the school is a safe learning environment, then we need our students in-school learning, and likewise, we need our highly qualified and effective staff there, teaching them. So if there's any communication that needs to take place there, I would like to encourage that that occur, Dr. Burzong, with you, with any others that is necessary in order to get that communicated. The other item, I would appreciate, Dr. Burzong, if you would just describe what your expectations were for the meeting last night. I know that you and I communicated, and in our communication, you wanted the administration to share with the parents, and you asked that board members not get in the middle. So, I just appreciate if you could explain your expectations and requests, because some of us are getting asked why weren't we there, so.
I think that's a fair question. So, I met with, with the team, and of course, we've been meeting quite frequently, because again, at the end of the day, the safety and security of our children and staff is of the utmost importance to us. And so we, as we discussed how we wanted to address parent concerns and issues, I knew that it would be best for our experts, our division-level experts, to be able to provide answers to questions. So, as I worked with my team, we decided, we decided that the two deputies, one who is in charge of the schools and the other in operations, would be able to field questions that parents had. We wanted it to be very informal, very inviting, so that parents felt that they could ask any questions that they wanted to ask. We wanted everyone to feel comfortable, we wanted staff to feel comfortable, we didn't want the stuffiness of a, of a microphone, and, you know, we just wanted it to be an environment where we could have a family discussion about what was going on. And so, I did respectfully, I said, "I know, board members, you guys can do what you want to do, because you're my boss, I'm not your boss," but I did want it to be a family communication where our experts could answer the questions, because we had, we had preliminary reports at that time, and I thought that it would be in our best interest to provide parents with the information that they needed, so they could feel comfortable knowing that we wouldn't have their children in a school that was unsafe. And so, that was our discussion around the deputies being there to facilitate that, knowing that I would give the formal presentation today.
And last, I would just ask, so last year, former superintendent, Dr. Boone, in working with the board, asked for the council of great city schools to come in and do a review of facilities, operations, finances. And we were scheduled to receive a presentation on that report last August, I think initially. Then we, requests were made to follow up and have a presentation, and we've yet to have that presentation. But one of the things that was contained in that report was a concern about principals performing pest control activities, because they felt the services provided by the department at the time was inadequate. That's not to say that that's accurate, I'm just sharing what the reporter addressed. And we've talked about this some in the facilities committee, and we've talked about how we're going to work together on this. But I would like to ask if the board and the superintendent would revisit scheduling the council of great city schools to come and do the presentation and give the, the board the report that they had planned to give, and that some of us had requested that they come to give, because many of, some of the issues, I think, operationally and some of the recommendations that they have, would put us in a better position to address these issues across the, the division. And so, just so the board knows, you know, we've talked about in the facilities committee, again, that our intent is to come back in January with some strategic recommendations for the board to consider around the purpose and role of the committee. But in the meantime, I think it's very important that we take this opportunity to re-review the report and have a presentation and consider some of the recommendations contained in the report.
Noted. And I think I do recall, Mr. Jordan, we had tried to reschedule them last year during the first week of school, and we were confronted with the hurricane, and so I think we had to do some rerouting, but certainly, the request is noted. Was there anything else on your list that you needed?
Not at the moment, but we'll see.
Okay. Other board members that had questions?
Dr. Burzong, I do have one item that was brought up last night, and that was communication to the parents. Several parents had indicated that they had not received the phone call notifying them of the meeting. Can you please touch on, on that item?
Absolutely. We have the Blackboard Connect system, and I would just, if parents have stated that they did not receive a telephone call, then I would strongly encourage them to make contact with the school, to make sure that the school has their most up-to-date contact information. Because if we have a, for example, if phone numbers have changed, or, or what have you, in order for the school to reach out to the parents, they're going to need that current contact information. So I would strongly advise parents to reach out to the school, to make sure that the school has the most up-to-date information. And not only for instances of this nature, but it could be a child gets sick, gets sick at school, or there's another emergency and we need to contact parents, I would just make sure that, that information is up to date. And I'm sorry to hear that many of them did not get the call.
Certainly.
Dr. Gabriel, remember that, a couple of other things, if nobody else has anything.
Okay, okay.
One, on the, I know we said that the initial reporting date was September 27th.
Mr. Jordan, just, that was when it was reported to me?
Right.
Okay.
And me.
Okay.
Right, so, that was going to be my question, so, is, was there others who received an earlier report, and if so, is there something we need to do to make sure that something like that gets elevated?
I honestly don't think so. I, it was, the work, there was work already underway, when, by the, the school was working with the custodial staff and facilities, as the normal process is. And, and then it, as the, as it, as it elevated, and the concerns elevated, then it was, then it was, it was brought to another level, which is typical of how things happen. So, there was work that was going on prior to the 27th, you know, that was not the, that certainly was not the first date, but I believe that facilities was working on it from around the, the 7th to the 10th of September, something, something in that range. So, a couple of weeks that had been, the process was underway. And then, when it was, when it, when it was brought to our attention, we, we took it to another level.
Yeah, and I guess following up with Ms. Bassin, if there's something in the process that requires something, if something triggers a matter to be elevated, then for us to review that. The other thing, well, two other things. So, there's been pictures that have been shared, at least have been shared with the media. Do we have anything that you all can share with the school board? Because I don't think we've seen any.
So, I would say there were pictures provided by one of the contractors, I believe that's where those pictures came from, of what was thought to be the white mold. I, I think that information, those pictures came from a contractor, so I'm definitely we could share.
That's in a report, it's in one of the reports, yes, sir.
And then the last thing, there's been concerns voiced by staff, that when issues like this, when they become aware, that there's a concern about reprisals and repercussions and concerns and fear about reporting matters that they encounter, can you all speak to what our expectations are and what our climate will be, so that if a staff person, or a student, or a parent sees something that addresses the welfare of our children and staff, that they should feel comfortable with sharing that and not having fear of repercussion or reprisals?
Absolutely. Every child, every parent, any teacher, principal, any staff member should feel comfortable reporting what they believe to be something that will result in a safety and security issue. And, and we did have that discussion, again, this, this morning about the school, because I had heard that perhaps the teachers may feel, they felt that if they reached out, that, you know, there would be some negative, negative consequences, and certainly, that is not the case. That is not the case at all. In fact, we want people to let us know what's going on, so that we're not always, we can be more proactive in, in dealing with matters of, of this nature.
And if I may, Mr. Jordan, from personal experience from last night, I had a pocket full of business cards that I took with me, and I talked to numerous parents during and after that, and, and that very concern was raised to me, and I gave him a card and said, "If, if you know the teacher that you're referring to, give him my card and tell him to call me." And, and we, we want to, we want to hear what the concerns are.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Burzong. We still have the video for the superintendent's report.
So, in standing with our monthly tradition, we have prepared a video for you, just to share with you all of the exciting things that our children and teachers and principals and community members have been engaged with, with the school division.
Karen?
Yes, it gives me pleasure to ask my coworkers in the communications office to roll the tape on the exciting things that are happening here in Norfolk Public Schools.
The Southside STEM Academy at Camp Estella invited parents and members of the community into their building to learn more about pre-K and science, technology, engineering, and math, or STEM. During the school day, community members visited several classrooms to see firsthand how STEM is being integrated into lessons in every subject area.
I want the community members to see that STEM is happening on a daily basis. Students are involved with hands-on, they're involved with project-based learning activities, they're involved with making sure that they become productive citizens. So I'm excited about having the community members here in our building.
Later that evening, parents attended a special event that focused on pre-K and kindergarten readiness. A speaker from the Virginia Department of Education talked about what pre-K should look like and how it prepares children for kindergarten.
We know that 48-month-old children need to have materials, they need to have movement, they need to be active at all times, as much as possible, in the preschool classroom. So that means they're learning by doing, they're interacting with materials, and the teachers are facilitating higher-level thinking questions and strategies that help the children move on at their pace, which might be different from the child sitting next to them.
If they are exposed to literature, if they're exposed to counting and numbers, numbers, if they're exposed to oral language, that will help prepare them. The other thing is that social-emotional piece. If they are able to collaborate, if they're able to engage, if they're able to communicate with others, that shows kindergarten readiness.
Students in Booker T. Washington High School's Academy of Visual and Performing Arts Program had the opportunity to experience a masterclass from an actual Broadway performer, James Lane, who's in town as part of the cast of Guys and Dolls at the Wells Theater, taught these enthusiastic students a musical number that included singing and dancing. For many of these students, it was their first time learning a routine from a professional entertainer in a single class.
I think it was received well, you know, I, I explained to them at the end of it, I know it's a bit alien-like for someone to come from somewhere and to be teaching something that nobody knows, and it's high school, but they were really engaged, and they won it. And, you know, I think that's why they take the classes, I think that's why, you know, the arts connects at a level that, that other things don't.
I actually want to be a doctor, but theater is a very big part of my life, music is very a big part of my life, and it just, it, it pushes me forward towards my goal. I have never experienced this before, I, I've always been a big fan of musicals, I listen to musicals all the time, and I never really got the chance to feel one before and be in one. So this was definitely a new experience, and it was a lot of fun.
Well, I think it's going to expose them and what they need to do to prepare if they want to go into the world of Broadway. They have to be a dancer, singer, actor, so they have to develop their skills in all of those areas, and I think that it will continue to motivate them to follow their path here at Booker T.
Hundreds of juniors and seniors from all five of Norfolk's high schools visited Virginia Wesleyan University for the annual post-secondary college fair. This fair enables students to speak directly with representatives from dozens of universities, colleges, and trade schools from around the country. Having all these resources assembled in one place helps these soon-to-be graduates determine their next steps after high school.
It's good, because sometimes we're not able to go to the colleges, because there are other places, so it's good that they come to us. It's a lot, but nothing we can't handle. We get to see different ones, even if we weren't, if we didn't know about them, and we still get to know more stuff about them, and even potentially put them in one of our picks.
I feel like, not to sound corny or anything, but I'm kind of blessed, because my mom has really pushed me to go here, because I went here last year, but now I'm a senior. I think it's amazing. I think we, like, having all these colleges, some known and some like unknown, having a chance to like, interact and experience what they might offer you is really cool.
What I'm hoping to get out of it is that they're able to see me as who I am, not just a number in their, their plethora of people that are taking these college applications. And so, I'm really able to get out of the, the information that they're giving me, and then they're able to get the information about who I am as a person.
I am here
I am here because, number one, I heard VCU was gonna be here. As you can see, I already got my VCU pamphlet. I'm very excited. Seeing all these colleges here just really makes me see the diversity and the fact that I have so many choices. And so I'm really loving this ambiance, this energy, like, I'm feeling like I'm gonna get a lot of really good information today, and I'm just really excited to be here.
Parents of NPS students gathered at the Academy of Discovery at Lakewood for the first of four district-wide math nights. This event was held for parents to learn more about how math is taught in their children's classrooms and how they can better support learning math at home. The next math night is scheduled for December 10th at a location to be determined. On October 2nd, schools around the district participated in International Walk to School Day. At Granby Elementary, teachers and parents walked with students and held signs that promoted pedestrian safety and encouraged everyone to be safe on the road. Once at the school, they were greeted by a representative from Safe Routes to School who gave out various activity books, pencils, and bells to encourage safety while walking to school. School Nutrition held its first-ever job fair in late September, and based on the turnout, it was a big success. Dozens of applicants showed up to fill approximately 100 vacancies, including substitutes, cafeteria monitors, and other full and part-time positions. Potential employees were impressed with the efficiency of the job fair and looked forward to serving students healthy meals throughout the district.
Candidates are constantly coming in. We've had candidates waiting to be seen, to be interviewed, well-qualified candidates who are not only volunteer with the district, but who want to enter into an employment relationship with the district.
When they come today, they're going to have an onsite interview, we're going to have an orientation, we're going to do onsite TB screenings, we're going to help them to get the Norfolk Food Handlers Card if they need that, and we're going to give them the information to get their employee ID badges and such.
I'm excited that the process has been streamlined like this. It makes it so easy to get everything done here, all in one day. It's really, it's not complicated at all. It's been really nice. I'm excited. Yeah, I'm excited to work with the kids.
Maury High School's wide receiver, Keandre Lambert, one of the top football prospects in the state, revealed his college decision at a Maury pep rally recently. With over 30 schools to choose from, including Clemson, Alabama, and Notre Dame, it was the Nittany Lions of Penn State who won out.
When I went there for my official, you know, I just had a great feeling. Me and the coaches, we connected instantly, me, Coach Parker, Coach Franklin, and I got a good vibe from the players. It felt like I was already there when I went there. So, I mean, I took that experience, Coach McCann wasn't with me, so I took that experience, came back home, talked to Coach McCann, and, you know, last weekend, we finally made a decision that Penn State is our opposing.
For more news stories and other information about Norfolk Public Schools, watch NPS Now on WNPSTV 47 or the NPS website.
Dr. Gabriel, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. Item 3.06, School Board Clerk's Report. Ms. Tanner.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Gabriel, Acting Superintendent, Dr. Birdsong, school board members, family members, friends, and staff, welcome to tonight's school board meeting. I always like to recognize, we've seen on the video, we've recognized our students, our staff members, but tonight, we're gonna recognize our school board members and the dedicated work that they've done through the VSBA's Academy Awards. So I'm gonna call out their awards, and then I'm gonna pass their awards out to them because the sake of time. So right now, I want to recognize Virginia School Board Association's Award of Distinction. This award is presented to Tanya Basin and Rodney Jordan for your commitment to effective school board governance through your participation in the VSBA School Board Academy for 2017 through 2019. Let's give them a round of applause. Next, I want to recognize Dr. Noel Gabriel. She received the Award of Honor for her commitment to effective school board governance through her participation in the VSBA School Board Academy for 2017 and 2019. Let's give her a hand. And our next board members, we have Lauren Camson, we have Carlos Clanton, who's not here this evening, Adele Martin, and Christine Smith. And these individuals were awarded the Award of Achievement. And this award is presented to them for their commitment to effective school board governance through their participation in the VSBA Academy Award from 2018 to 2019. So let's give them a round of applause. And finally, we want to recognize Dr. Birdsong, who received the Award of Recognition for her commitment to effective school board governance through the participation in the VSBA Board Academy for 2018 and 2019. Let's give her a round of applause. For the sake of time, I will pass these out at the end of the meeting. Very much. Also, we just have several recognitions for and observances for November. School Psychology Awareness Week is November 11th through the 15th with a theme, Find Your Focus. And American Education Week is November 18th through the 22nd and celebrates public education and honor individuals who are making a difference in ensuring that every child receives a quality education. And on November 8th, we recognize National Parents as Teachers' Day. We also recognize National Young Readers' Day, and that's the second Tuesday, and then we recognize National STEM and STEAM Day. And then according to the National Education Association, on Tuesday, November 19th, is Parents' Day. On Wednesday, November 20th, is Education Support Professionals' Day. And Thursday, November 21st, is Educator for a Day. And Friday, November 22nd, is Substitute Educators' Day. So let's remember next month in November to recognize these particular activities, right? It's a lot. And thank you very much, and that's the end of my report.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tanner. The next item on our agenda are citizen comments on agenda items only. And just for the sake of being perfectly clear, if you did come and you wanted to speak on Sherwood Forest Elementary School, this is an agenda item since it was brought up in the superintendent's report. So please feel free, we do have a process in place. Ms. Tanner will call your name. You can come to the speaker's podium, the podium can be adjusted to suit your height. State your name, whether you have a child in Norfolk Public Schools or if you are employed in the system. State your position, give the facts and other relevant data. If you represent a group or an organization, ask others to rise and be recognized. Please give any written comments as supporting material to the clerk, Ms. Tanner, for the record. And you are limited for a three-minute presentation. When the clerk signals that your time is up, please quickly end your comments and be seated. The school board does not respond to citizen remarks at the time that they are given. So, Ms. Tanner, if you could call the speakers that have signed.
Yes, we have nine speakers this evening. The first one is Crystal Law, followed by Farqan Sali. If it sounds like you, trust me, I hope it is you. So please come forward, and followed by Whitney Davis.
All right. So, good evening, everybody. My name is Crystal Law. I have a six-year-old, thank you, a six-year-old daughter that I brought with me tonight, that's a first grader at Sherwood Forest Elementary School. I wanted you all to have a face to put with the issues I have to discuss tonight. I'm a public servant myself, I'm a registered nurse, I've been an operating room nurse for 10 years. I worked for the government and also worked for one of the only Level 1 trauma centers in this area. The issues going on at Sherwood Forest are real. I have not sent my daughter to school this week because I am concerned for her safety. I have taken her to a doctor to have her allergy tested, as I'm sure you all know, you cannot be tested for asbestos, takes 10 to 40 years to show up on a chest X-ray and a lab work. I've had her tested for everything possibly out of my pocket. My insurance won't even cover some of the allergy tests that she's having done, and I have the paperwork to back this up. I also have pictures in my phone with me tonight. I understand that they said one rodent was caught this week, or seven rodents have been caught in the last two weeks. Dr. Gabriel can agree. I showed her rat droppings, there were rat droppings in the back of the auditorium where we had our emergency public meeting. Their pictures on the news are not coming from nowhere. The staff is concerned and they're worried if it was just seven or eight mice, they wouldn't have felt the need to go to the news. It's bigger than that. I've emailed the EPA, the Department of Health, all the school board members, the superintendent, everyone. I feel like I'm at a loss, I don't know what to do. I am concerned for my daughter. The rats are eating into the supplies, there are pictures of this that everyone can access. The rats are eating into the supplies in the classrooms. There are rodent droppings in the cafeteria, do you think that they're not contaminating the food? I don't feel safe sending my daughter to school, and I feel like I have no options. I feel like I'm not being heard. I understand and I appreciate the information that the committee has provided about the plans moving forward, but I feel like it's not enough. I will not send my daughter back to school until I get the lab results, which may take two weeks, and I'll be more than happy to go to truancy court and explain that to any judge, any jury, anybody of persons that are interested to hear. I've discussed this with my coworkers, my neighbors, my family, my friends, my church members. I don't have social media, Facebook or Twitter, or, I don't do that, but word of mouth goes a long way. And when you're good to people, people are good back. So I volunteer on the rec committee, I write letters to citizen leaders, I'm a taxpayer and I vote in every election, and I will continue to do that. So please take my concerns to heart. I understand what you're doing, but it's not enough. Like, I have fear sending my daughter to school and letting her eat school lunch. Would you all go to the school and eat lunch next week in the cafeteria? You know, I just don't know what else to do, and I thank you for the time.
Okay. Mr. Sali.
My name is Farqan Ali, and I'm just a concerned citizen. Actually, Mr. Jordan kind of ambushed me. I'm not here for the topic, but since I'm here. How much does it cost to rebuild Sherwood Elementary School? And could you give me, like, when was it built, and like a brief history on the history of the school, just brief? Can anybody give me the date when the school was built?
We don't usually respond to citizen comments, so we couldn't do that, but at a later time, we can provide that information to you.
Right, right. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Whitney Davis, followed by Giselle Moran.
Ms. Moran and I are both non-agenda items, would you like us to still?
Yes.
No, no, no.
No, you can.
They're, they're non-agenda items.
Oh, they're non-agenda, okay. If it's not about, okay. Yeah, all right. Steven Swartz, followed by Tanisha Bryant-Jones.
My name is Steven Schweers. I've been a community member at Sherwood for 10 years. I have two children, they are 10 and 7, they've been in the school since pre-K. First, it's sort of like maybe a rebuttal question to what was said previously on the subject. And I'm not sure if I missed this, but was, there was no straightforward answer why we weren't properly informed in a timely manner about the issues. I just, I don't know if I missed that or not. And, Mr. Jordan, we were told to act accordingly in our discretion as far as absences. And if there is any doubt, I don't think any parent wants their kids in potential danger. Any absences should be excused during the inquiry. And Mrs. Birdsong, we utilize an app that is more effective in this current age than a robo-call or the Blackboard. Why was the notice taken down off of the app in the first place? I'm not understanding that. And opted out for a phone call. This is, the app is also a way for parents to effectively communicate. So, this is in regards to the air quality. There was a test taken, I spoke to Mr. Bankard yesterday, and I actually saw the form. I was supposed to email him and did not have the chance to. But there was one taken in 2016 that had less clotiporium and penicillium count than it does now. Is this rate of growth to be expected, and what steps are being taken to stop the growth of the spores now? And, so as to my understanding, apparently, eyes on title has changed, but the duties of the said position remain the same. After reviewing the duties of this position, I believe it's vital to allow transparency to parents and teachers and administrators alike. To my understanding, the position was closed October 15th, I mean, October 5th, I'm sorry, 2019. Will it be reopened in light of the situation that arise, and will there be steps to fill this position at Sherwood? And this is actually, I'm not sure if this is an agenda issue or not, it's about the safety of the students at Sherwood.
Fine, go ahead.
I have 24 seconds. My plan moving forward is to be more involved as I should have been in the past. In my opinion, it is clear that, you know, certain individuals may be too busy to pay attention to certain schools in some areas. This is where the PTA can help. Parent-teacher associations can be effective on bringing issues forward to administration in a more expedited manner. With that being said, now that there is light...
You can finish your comment.
Now that there's been a light shined on the negligence befell on Sherwood, I have photos of the playground equipment that is very out of date and poses danger. What steps can be taken to remove the old steel equipment, replace it with up-to-code, safe equipment? And, you know, I plan to reach out to the community for volunteers to maybe, you know, help the city, you know, do something with removing or installing new playground equipment. I'm in the construction industry, so I have no problem doing that whatsoever.
Okay.
Is something like this possible? And community will be key in the weeks to come for results for the safety of Sherwood students.
Thank you very much.
And is there budget, money to fix these issues? And if not, what exactly is more important than the safety of our children?
Thank you very much.
Tanisha Bryant-Jones, followed by Kevin Barbo.
So, for me, as of a child there, the main concern yesterday that we all wanted was transparency. No miscommunication, omitting the ball was dropped, you didn't start the timer. Didn't omit to dropping the ball, there was no communication sent to us. Even when you were aware of the situation, at that point, we still were not communicated. I've updated my phone number five times since school started. Let my nephew miss school, I get that call. Something happens in the school, I do not get the robo-call. There was a post made on the dojo, the minute an angry parent responded, it was removed. For me, as a parent, I want clear understanding of the situation, I want transparency. You guys can send homework for days home for these kids. We can get a pamphlet as a parent that has our questions with the answers. If we have a question, I feel that there should be a direct point of contact, an email, not a phone number because y'all are gonna get calls all day. But, like, an email that we can contact, someone we can speak to, to address these concerns with a reasonable turnaround time. Anything confirming the next steps of what's going to take place. Who's doing what, what's going to be done going forward? Everybody's concern is the children's safety, absolutely. If you guys want the parents' trust, you have to provide tangible results to make our children feel safe there. There should be no reason my nephew is coming home to tell me what he found on the ground. None. We don't have that in our house, I don't want it in my house, and I don't want him transporting anything from the school to my house. If we can have clear and the open communication from you guys, staff, whoever, there needs to be a response to our questions. Last night was a circus, we did not get the answers we needed, we did not get anything, and I respect y'all for coming up there later. Because y'all listened to understand us and understand what we were saying instead of listening to respond in the moment. So I appreciate you and Mr. Carlos for coming up there later. But we still need to be heard, you guys still need to respond to us. Our children still have to go there. Y'all tell us, it's up to us to send our kids or not. What about those that are single parents? If they're not, their child's not in school, they have to miss work. Nobody's paying for them to keep their bills running in their house, so they have to go to school. We have to go to work. That's not a reasonable outcome.
Kevin Barbo, please.
Please.
Okay. Okay, that's it for our citizen comment on agenda items.
Wait, I put my name on there.
You're on the other one.
Oh, okay. I didn't know it wasn't on agenda.
Yeah.
Because it's about Sherwood Forest.
Oh, well then you come forward.
Please come forward.
And just state your name.
Sean Twan Franklin.
My name is Sean Twan Franklin. Both of my children go to Sherwood Forest. My concern is, as the previous person stated, I'm a single mom. I don't have the discretion to keep my kids at home. I can't homeschool my children. It's not a matter of me not wanting to. I cannot. I work 40 hours plus a week to take care of my children. I need to know that they're safe when I send them somewhere. I hear that they're doing stuff to the installation. If it has asbestos in it, doesn't that make it move around? Doesn't that put it in the air? I'm concerned when I send my kids somewhere. I couldn't sleep last night thinking about my children somewhere that they were not safe. And there was nothing I could do because it's either send them to school or not go to work and not pay my rent or buy food for them. I don't want those to be my only two options for somewhere for my children to go. It's a public school. It should be safe. They should be safe wherever I send them. It's my job as their mom to make sure they're safe. It's my job to advocate for them. And I feel like if I'm sending them to this school and there are people who are keeping their kids home because it's not a safe environment, I can't do that. It's not for lack of loving my children. It's the fact that I can't. What else am I supposed to do? I just want, and not just that, I also don't want to take my kids out of this school and leave other kids whose parents can't take them out or other parents who don't have the option of doing that. I can't just pick up and move and move to a new school district. I can't put them in private school. It's like a rock and a hard place. If I'm told at my discretion, where do they go? They can't stay at daycare. They don't have another person I can send them to. I just want the school to be safe. I want to make sure that they're not breathing in something. I'm not going to see an infomercial in 20 years that says, hey, did you send your kids to Sherwood Forest in 2019? Does your child have cancer and now you need to do some kind of class action suit? I don't want money. I want safety for my children. I want them to be healthy. I fight for that and I want to make sure that that's what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members who wanted to speak on the topic of Sherwood Forest Elementary? Since this is an agenda item? Yes?
My name is Rosemary Delgado. I came in late. I'm sorry I didn't get to sign my name. I have a four-year-old and a six-year-old in the school. My four-year-old has to lay on the floor, on a mat, where there are roaches and rats. Would you allow your child to lay there? And like her, I don't have the money. I'm a single mom. What do we do? Not one answer was given last night. Not one ounce of, we're going to fix this. And I understand also economically that you can't give a transfer to every student. But there has to be something done. There has to be some emergency resources to fix this problem. There has to be. And the protocol, I'm glad you said that. Why is there not one in place? Last night, someone said, you cannot have a school without roaches and rats. I'm from New York. Yes, you can. Because they shut you down immediately. No ands or buts about it until the problem is fixed. They will put the children in the other schools within the district or bust them out of district if they cannot put them within the district. This is so disheartening. My six-year-old can't articulate to me what he sees. He's autistic. No answers. The rat boxes, they're locked. Yeah. But a child can put their hand in it. They can reach their hand in it. If a rat can't reach, a four-year-old can reach their hand in it. They are all around the outside of the school. They can reach their hands in it. These are not acceptable measures that have been taken. And the fact that there was no transparency and we had to wait for over a month to hear something, anything at all, that there was a slight problem and it was downplayed so much is unacceptable. I too am a taxpayer. I have voted since I was 18 years old. I respect all of my, everybody who, even if I didn't vote for you, you are in office and I will respect you because that is your job. We don't all have to agree, but we do have to provide our children with a safe place to go. There are roaches in the bags that my six-year-old has to take his breakfast to the classroom in. That's where the airborne disease comes from. I'm not even so much worried about the asbestos. I'm worried about it, but not so much what's coming from the rat feces and urine and the cockroach feces. Because that's an immediate illness. And my children are on breathing treatments as well. There has to be something that can be done immediately. I would be willing to send my children to school an extra month in the summer if they had to shut down for a month to get it straight. There has to be something done.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now we are moving on to approval of the consent agenda. And just board members again so that you know, we have been working diligently with the policy committee to make sure that our policies are in alignment, they're easy to read, that they are fulfilling all the SBA criteria. For that reason, we did pull the policies from the consent agenda today just so they could have another thorough review before bringing them to the board. We will be bringing them back to the board for the November combined work session and formal meeting. So we will move ahead with approval of the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Okay, Ms. Martin moves to approve. Ms. Campson has seconded. Is there any further discussion? Ms. Bassin?
So I would like to see if we can't move the minutes. Unfortunately, I think that at the timing that they were posted, I don't know about anyone else, but I have not had the chance to review them.
Okay, so you are requesting that remove the approval of the minutes off of the consent agenda and as a separate discussion item or remove them altogether?
Well, if I can add, I would just ask if we could also deal with them in November. Because I did briefly look at them in the last couple of hours, but there's some updates I think are required and I don't want to prolong it here.
Okay. Is there a, so then, would you mind offering an amendment to the motion to amend the original motion to remove the approval of the minutes and move them over to the November meeting?
I move to amend the consent agenda to move the approval of minutes to the November agenda.
Second it.
Okay, second. All right. Is there any further discussion? There being none, can I please have Ms. Tanner, if you can call the roll? The motion is to approve the consent agenda with the amendment of removing the minutes and postponing them to be approved at the November meeting.
Yes. Bassin?
Aye.
Campson?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye. Thank you very much. Just note that on here real quick. Thank you. And now we are on to item 5.01, monthly financial reports. Dr. Birdsong?
Dr. Gabriel, members of the board. At this time, I will ask Ray Reyes to approach the podium. Mr. Reyes is the senior director of accounting and he will be providing an update on our month-end financial and budget reports for September. Mr. Reyes?
Dr. Gabriel, members of the board, acting superintendent and members of the community. I'm going to provide you with a very brief report on the November financial highlights. Revenues for the month of November were, up to the month of November, were $84.3 million, which is 25.1% of the total budget. This compares with 21.3% for the same time period in fiscal year 2019 and 23.3% for fiscal year 2018. The expenditures and encumbrances for the same month were $63.7 million or 19% of our budget. This compares with 17.4% for the same period in fiscal year 2019 and 15.5% for fiscal year 2018. A summary of budget transfers, $50,000 or greater for the same period is attached. You all have a complete package. And in addition to this, we have a schedule of revenue and expenditures, which is basically the same information in a different format. That is basically the financial minutes. Do you have any questions?
Board members, any questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would like to have a motion on the floor to approve the monthly financial reports as presented.
I move that we approve the monthly financial report as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? There being none, Ms. Tanner, can you please call the roll?
Bassin?
Aye.
Campson?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye. Thank you very much. Item 5.02, citizen comments on non-agenda items only. Again, we are following the same format as before. Please come to the podium, state your name, whether you have a child in the system. Keep your comments to three minutes and the board does not respond.
We have three speakers. Mr. Ali, followed by Mr. Summerville.
My name is Fakhan Ali. Dr. Birdsong and the school board members, I would like to briefly discuss a topic which is dear to my heart. And it's a brief history of Booker T. Washington High School. And for the past several years, I've been questioning the students that attend the school. And I asked them, what does the "T" stand for in Booker T. Washington? And I would estimate, I was doing this for about five years and not one student knew. Amazing, isn't it? And then I said, have you ever read a book about his life? Not one knew. I said, do you know the title of the book? That's dozens and dozens of students that I've been surveying. So I find that kind of odd or disturbing. We say we love our children. We say education is the key. This is how we talk. Reading is fundamental. This is the language we use. I was listening to previous speakers about a subject I'm not, wasn't discussing. It's about our children. We say the children are our future. Now, Booker T. Washington, as you all know, natives here of Virginia. He was a native of Virginia, Franklin County. I read the book, I'm from slavery. And he was enslaved. And then, what makes it more miraculous, came up out of slavery, became an author, a scholar, a university named after him in Alabama. I mean, he was part of the board who founded Tuskegee University. So I would think Dr. Birdsong and, you know, the school board members, look, you would just think that you attend a school and you know nothing about the man. And I'm not saying that the rest of the schools across the city of Norfolk, whatever. I don't know the history of each school. But that school, because I read a book, so it caught my eye, my interest. So I've been thinking for the past five years. Should not the students, at least for BHM, that means Black History Month, should read a book about his life and do a book report? At least for that month. Look, I know if I'd said, look, make this a curriculum, then we, now we talking in politics and money, mm, right? No. Just for February. Look, we are educators here. I'm a literary man. I read. This is what I do. I study African history. So let me make this quick quote and I would hope, when I first started, I didn't use up my time the first time. So let me end with two quotes. A great scholar in New York City, I heard my sister say she was from New York and I'm from Jersey, and it's called the Shumberg Center, was founded by author Alfonso Schumberg, world famous center. And listen to his quote. African history is simply the missing pages of world history. I didn't say that. Our brother, our ancestor, Dr. Schumberg, and with this quote by Booker T. Washington himself, he says, so eloquently, you go to school, you study about the Germans and the French, but not about your own race. I hope the time will come when you study black history too. Who said that? Our beloved brother Booker T. Pharaoh Washington. And where the students there don't even know his middle name. Look, this is unacceptable.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next we have John Summerville, followed by Ellen Fitz and Rider.
Good evening, Dr. Gabriel, Dr. Birdsong, members of the board. I had requested previously to meet with some of your facilities people in regards to issues at Booker T. Washington. And we did have a meeting. And Mr. Hasslett, Mr. Johnson, myself, the principal, vice principal, we got together and we went over some of the issues that were a problem for Booker T. Mr. Hasslett does have a copy of it with all the issues that we had addressed. And I can definitely, I can understand the issues that they have at Sherwood. Thank goodness, we haven't found that bigger problem at Booker T. as of recently. But the things that I did see, being an engineer myself and working in facilities management, some of the things that I saw were, I would say, not the norm, not good engineering practice, I'll put it that way. And I'm not sure if it's because of the fact that the budget for maintenance is small in comparison to the number of schools. When you have a $3 million budget for 57 schools, that doesn't say much. And I lived in an area prior to coming back home and we had a million, we had a million and five for 12 schools. So, you know, I'm just, I was just absolutely floored by the fact that we can only put $3 million into our schools where we have kids. They are our future. And if we don't take care of them on all levels, on the elementary, junior high school and high school levels, we really have to rethink how we spend our money within the Norfolk City schools. Because this is not going away. You've got schools that are in the 30s and 40s as far as age and these schools will start to fall and you will have no infrastructure to replace them. And that is definitely alarming. And these are the, these are the schools that are going to have to teach the kids that we have. And I can definitely say for myself, with the experience I have, that we're not getting it done. We're not getting it done. As far as all the other issues that go along with the school, I've left that with Mr. Hasslett and he'll probably talk about it, him and Mr. Johnson. So they can get that and want to go into each one of those because it's a long list. And they do have the list, as well as Dr. Stalling, she submitted a list to him as well. But there were a couple of issues that I did find that were a problem. And this issue with mold and moisture in the schools. NIOSH gives us guidelines. You've got EPRA, RECRA, you've got all the different reportings that you can use to get it done. You've got to do that. Got to get them in there because there are problems there that are going to eventually red their heads. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Fitz and Rider?
My name is Ellen Fitz and Rider. I am the parents of an eighth grader. We're in Blair School District, but she currently attends Northside Middle School. Good evening, Dr. Birdsong and school board. I've shared with you two requests for information that I've recently made under the Freedom of Information Act. And I would like to share with you why I made these particular requests and I am awaiting my responses. Request number one was sent through learning support and it deals with families who struggle with advocating for their children who receive special education services and have found it necessary to move beyond their school IUP teams to request mediation, file a VDOE complaint, or even to step into due process with legal counsel. I personally know a few families who have gone these routes. I filed my own VDOE complaint against several school administration individuals I filed my own VDOE complaint against several school administration individuals in the fall of 2018. I did not have an attorney. I spent dozens of hours constructing my complaint, including 125 pages of supporting documentation. The determination from the VDOE was that the team had followed proper procedure. So be that as it may. It made me wonder, how many families go to mediation or due process or file VDOE complaints each year against Norfolk Public Schools? What are the decisions? Which are appealed? And I also asked which specific schools were involved in these cases, and that last question is important because I have, as I have shared with the board in various ways over the past year, my family's experience at our elementary school and my daughter's education was, shall we say, tumultuous. Yet I speak with families with children receiving special education services at other schools, some of them have an excellent experience. While I'm happy for them, I have to wonder why such a difference? So hopefully we'll find out and see if there's certain schools that have a tendency towards issues than others. My request number two was sent to the City of Norfolk Communications Division for your requests. I am a self-employed, single mom of two daughters. I did not go the route of due process despite our problems for these two reasons only. The first is everyone who I knew who had gone through due process had spent between $20,000 and $40,000 with little to show for it. The second reason was going to due process would put my daughter's IUP in stay-put mode, which meant that for the duration of due process and a possible appeal, which could go on for years, she would receive only the services in her current IUP. And I've shared with you before that at the time, her accommodations were listed as needed, which meant that much of the assistance that she needed all of the time rarely happened. I hope you can appreciate how trapped I felt. So I did not go to due process and cost myself and Norfolk taxpayers a bunch of money. I would like to add that when I first reached out, reached out beyond my school to this building, I was not looking for a fight. I was asking for help with a horrible and tractable situation that my daughter's quote-unquote "team" had devolved into. Our request was quickly escalated to legal counsel when it didn't have to be. Two sentences left. And so I wondered, how many other families are forced down this route? Because, believe me, you don't go down that road because it's an easy one. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Whitney Davis, followed by Giselle Moran.
Good evening, Dr. Bursong, Dr. Gabriel, members of the board. My name is Whitney Davis, and I'm here to speak on behalf of More Recess for Virginians Norfolk. Our group has recently gained the support of two important local organizations, Norfolk Botanical Garden and the Virginia Zoo. I'll read you their statements. Connecting people to nature through the world of plants is our passion at Norfolk Botanical Garden. Numerous scientific studies have underscored the wide-ranging benefits nature has on our mental and physical health. We are supportive of initiatives like More Recess for Virginians Norfolk, especially if it gives kids a greater opportunity to play in a green space and connect to nature. The second statement. The Virginia Zoo is committed to saving and protecting the world's wildlife by inspiring passion for nature and taking conservation action at home and around the world. The zoo strives to connect people of all ages to nature. Scientific research has shown that play is an important part of childhood development and helps children develop cognitively, socially, physically, and emotionally. Additionally, play in the outdoors helps children become environmentally conscious adults. The zoo is supportive of initiatives like More Recess for Virginians Norfolk that advocate to give children greater opportunity to play, especially in the outdoors. Michelle Lewis, Education Manager at the zoo, and I have been in contact with principals recently about the possibility of constructing nature play areas like the one at the zoo. These areas use natural materials like trees slated to be cleared by the city and give them new life as an organic jungle gym of sorts. It's more environmentally friendly, allows for more imagination from our kids, and costs much less than a traditional play structure. More Recess for Virginians Norfolk is working on a plan to bring these structures to schools where play structures are inadequate or unsafe for our kids. I'll keep you updated on this plan, and I'm grateful that the zoo and the botanical garden understand just how important outdoor play is in learning. And now I've got to switch gears because more and more I'm hearing about schools that do not seem to know or follow the current recess policy. This is a failure in leadership that equals a poor experience for our kids. The onus should not be on parents to make sure that principals and teachers are following district policy. Someone in the appropriate administrative position needs to make sure that every elementary school is, one, aware that PE and recess are distinct; two, aware that 20 minutes of recess is a minimum, not a suggestion; three, aware that recess cannot be taken away as punishment or to finish schoolwork or homework. And once principals and teachers are made aware, they should be held responsible for upholding the existing policy. Either principals and teachers were not made aware of the details of this board's policy, or they are willfully ignoring the policy, or they need but are not getting support to comply. No matter what the case is, the current state of things is unacceptable, and I shouldn't be the one who has to stand up here and request compliance.
Thank you. Giselle Moran?
Hello, I'm a military spouse in the area, and I'm actually reading a letter on behalf of my husband, who is deployed. So, sorry, I'm a little nervous with public speaking. As a parent who is currently serving the military, I am particularly interested in Norfolk Public Schools recess policy. The more recess and free play has always made sense to me, I have recently become aware of the research and recommendations for extended recess and free play, and the positive effects play can have on children and their academics. While I realize that this can on the surface pose some challenges for curriculum development and management in schools, I also have become convinced of the advantages associated with the additional recess time. This has become not so much a request as a demand for the continued development of our children. As a military parent, I do not necessarily have a choice in where I live, and yet I know that Norfolk has always had a special relationship with military. Particularly Norfolk Public Schools has gone above and beyond to ensure that they are providing top-notch education for military families. I believe that Norfolk and the Norfolk School System understands the importance of military families to the area and has in the past worked hard to accommodate the needs of military families. I would hope that with recess, the school board would again desire to be on the forefront of positive change and would accept the challenge of increasing recess time available to students. In this way, perhaps Norfolk Public Schools could continue to set the standard for education of military families across the USA. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's our last speaker.
Thank you very much.
On agenda items.
Ms. Tanner, thank you. Next item on the agenda is matters of the board, and we do have an update from Ms. Campson on our superintendent search, brief update. Ms. Campson?
Thank you. I know everyone in this room must know that we're having our stakeholder meetings next week, right? We've been advertising it everywhere. If you missed it, I, Ms. Tanner, did you put some of those schedules out for people to get as they came in?
We can do that.
Yeah. We'll make sure you get those if you did not get the schedule. We have our consultants coming back in Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. We have scheduled a dozen meetings across the district. We will have meetings on Monday, starting at 3:30 at Booker T. Washington High School. What is this middle name again?
Elliot Farah.
Every time I hear it, I can't remember it, though. It's an interesting name. I wonder if the name has a history?
Elliot Farah. It does.
Oh, okay.
It does.
Dr. Gabriel, update me on that. All right. Tuesday, we will be all day, starting at 8:00 in the morning and going through 9:30 Tuesday night with meetings, and then we will continue meetings on Wednesday morning and early afternoon. We have a community meeting held each day, one at each of the schools, but we also have more specialized meetings, for example, trying to bring community leaders that live in the communities. We have a meeting that's set for PTA presidents and Civic League presidents and faith leaders. And we have meetings that are scheduled for elementary teachers and secondary principals. But all of those meetings are open to everybody, just because it may not. If you're interested in a community meeting but you can't make one, then you can go to the meeting with the Civic League presidents or whatever. So please know that if you look at the schedule and one doesn't fit your particular schedule, you're invited to everything. Everything's open. Please, please come. This is very, very important. And the meeting I'm most excited about, as you know, we have two representatives, two student representatives to the school board, and they were very vocal about their desire that this voice of our students be heard. And so we do have, you can come to this one too, but we do have one at noon on Tuesday that will be bringing student leaders from all five high schools. Thank you to Mr. Coleman for getting that organized for me. I really appreciate it. So please, please be there. There's also a survey, if you can't make a meeting, or even if you do, there's a survey on the district's webpage and on board docs that's just one page, just fill it in and push the, you know, button to send it on. All of that information will be gathered. Our consultants will be taking, recording all the responses they get at all these meetings, and they'll be analyzing that along with the results of the survey and putting it in a booklet so that the school board will be presented with that, and we'll be discussing that at our meeting November 13th, which is pretty much an all-day meeting, which is open. Please come and see that if you would like, because, you know, we're really making an effort to have transparency here. So please, I'm going to have thousands of people show up, everyone. All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Campson. And as she alluded to, we will be having a full-day board meeting on November the 13th with the search firm consultants that the board has hired to dive deep into a variety of matters of discussion.
Especially to get the input from our stakeholders.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Excuse me, Dr. Gabriel?
Ms. Bassin.
Can you clarify for the full board the plan for November 13th? I think there might have been some...
Sure. The plan, which is still having some details worked out, but basically, the search firm will be arriving. They will spend the day with us on November the 13th in the morning. We wanted to allocate an adequate amount of time so that way we could dive into questions specifically pertaining into the feedback that they analyze based on the forums. So it's the feedback analysis. We will be determining questions for the applicants, the superintendent applicants, and we'll be also bringing forth some discussion items that have been brought forth by board members about questions that they had. We wanted to make sure that this was open, public discussion, and with our consultants. And Ms. Campson, am I leaving anything out?
Well, the meeting is open all day except for a little, for a shorter period at the end where we will be developing, be developing the questions to ask the candidates. We, of course, will not be publishing those ahead of time. But aside from that, it is open, and a big block of it is to make sure that everyone on the board is in agreement as we move forward. Because once we have all this information, which will be on the 13th, on November 14th is the close of the posting, the applications, and that's when they'll return back to wherever they work. And Nebraska, Nebraska. And bring all that information together to start choosing the semifinalists.
And on that day also, we will be combining our business meeting because the following week is the Virginia School Board Association annual meeting, and so that conflicts with our business meeting. So we are combining essentially a working meeting with our superintendent search firm. We will be putting aside a portion of time for work session items, and then we will be starting our business meeting at 7:00 as we normally do, and we'll have the closed session prior to.
Gabriel? So start time is?
9:00 in the morning.
9:00 in the morning.
Yes. 9:00.
Can I ask Ms. Tanner to please send a calendar invite out? Because it's not on my calendar, and so it's a little confusing.
Yes. We'll do that. Yep. Thank you very much. All right. Thank you again, everyone, for attending our meeting this evening. This concludes our...
Dr. Gabriel, you gave Ms. Campson the chance. I thought you were involved.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did not see your hand. I'm sorry.
Well, I didn't know. So just back to Sherwood Forest for a moment, I'm concerned that there still may be some confusion out there, or maybe we need to communicate what the expectations are around attendance. Heard tonight, reference to excuse absences. I did watch some of the video of the meeting last night. I heard references to excuse absences. Whatever the expectations are around attendance, I think it's important that we communicate that to every parent and to the staff. And so I just want to make sure that we don't leave here without addressing that, because I would. It's going to be upsetting if for some reason there are parents, based upon what they've heard from us in terms of, do whatever you think is best, and then that is interpreted as if you don't send your child, that it's an excuse absence. And to my understanding as of right now, that probably would be the case. It would be unexcused. And then children miss so many days, and then we have other issues. So if we, if we are going to decide to do unexcused absences, if we aren't going to do that, whatever the scenario is with attendance, I think based upon the conversations that have been held and what I've heard again tonight, I think it's important that we communicate whatever the facts are in regards to that.
Can Dr. Bursong answer that?
Well, I don't, I don't want, I don't, that's up to her. But I'm just saying that I, in terms of right now, I wasn't asking to try to put her on the spot. I just, if we're trying to say that I think that there may be some confusion out there, and I think we need to make sure, if there is any, that we are clear.
Understood.
The other thing, our meeting certifications. So I've been saying this now for several months, we have our board docs live. We made all of our meetings in advance live. And what that does then, when, when the board clerk or anyone else is providing updates on the meeting with it being live rather than it being in draft format, if items that are not exempt are placed on the agenda in a board member-only area, we're in conflict. So the, when board members receive something that's public, the public is supposed to have access to it. So I just want to recommend again that we take our board docs meetings, put the ones that are, that we are in advance, put those in draft mode, and just add to board docs and all our other notification areas, our meeting schedule, so that the public knows when we're going to meet and what time, but that we have our board docs in draft until we are ready to take it live. Otherwise, when we do these certifications, yes, we are okay on the notice, but we are not complying with making sure that the public has access to public information at the same times we are. And so I think that is important, that we get that straight. The only other thing, oh, did we intend in the consent agenda, at one time we had the VSBA recommendations that Ms. Martin went over at the last work session. They're not on the...
Correct. They're not there.
So are we, was that intentional?
Yes, it was. We were bringing them up in the November work session.
Okay. And let's see, Sherwood absences policy. Oh, and then the last thing is, I still believe that we should return our citizen comment period to one comment period as we had before until the board has adequate time to discuss it and to make sure it is aligned with our current policy. And if we're going to make any changes to the policy, that we would provide that through a regular process following the work session and a board vote, so that citizens can be clear on what our process is and that we change that as a result of a full board discussion.
Dr. Gabriel, can I speak to that?
Sure. Okay.
So I appreciate your email, and I did read through it, and I think that we should look at that, add that to our policy discussion at our next meeting on the 21st.
Thank you very much for your feedback, Mr. Jordan.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Could I say one?
Ms. Campson?
Just to remind the board that the budget for next year starts this month, the budget planning for that. I've already made mine, but I'd like it to be part of a board one. Last year, we didn't come together altogether and make our recommendations early, and, you know, I mean, you know me, I'm going to be pushing for more instructional support in our schools.
Got it.
Well, and I am. That's my big thing, raises and instructional support. And so my budget's done. I know it needs to become part of the board. So if everyone might want to be thinking about what your priorities are so that perhaps we can get that on an agenda pretty soon.
Actually, and Dr. Bursong and I have had several discussions about the appropriateness of placing that on the agenda, having it timely. placing that on the agenda, having it timely, learning from last year, and we've discussed that, and we're very well aware of the board's request. I appreciate that.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, not a question, but a comment to piggyback on that. So we've talked about a few topics and have agreed that it would be wise to have updates on these matters, and they are the pay and compensation study. You know, I think before we get into our budget discussion, I think, and I think we're, we would be entering phase four of the phase in.
That's true.
I think it would be good to see what the status is, and looking at some, also previously requested some teacher, you know, teacher allocation, teacher, you know, look at our resources and see where exactly we might want to target our resources. But I think to make sure that everybody is on the same page as what the recommendations were in 2016 and where we might need to go going forward. So that's one piece, and the other piece is our alternative education. And it's been three years since we last had an update on that, and I think it would be good to come back, revisit that and see where we are.
Thank you. Okay.
Along those lines, we also had asked for an audit of the special education program, and I've not heard anything about that, so that's definitely a priority.
Okay. Thank you. Noted. Ms. Smith?
Can I speak to that?
Okay. Actually, Dr. Burdson, would you like, okay, Ms. Smith?
Thank you. Along with what Mrs. Bassin said, teacher allocation, I think that is very important information that is needed before we begin any discussion on the budget, especially from an equity perspective and how we're going to fund schools going forward.
Thank you. Dr. Burdson?
I just wanted to provide a brief update on the special ed audit. So the last time we discussed that agenda item, I shared with you that we were hoping that we would be able to secure the services of the Council of Great City Schools, and they have agreed to move forward with the audit. They have other work ahead of our audit, but they have committed to the work. And so we are moving forward in that direction, so that has been confirmed.
Thank you.
And that also includes program evaluation.
It is.
Yes, yeah. And program evaluation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Well, thank you again, everyone, for attending this evening. I will call this meeting adjourned.